From last month's meeting, do I have a motion to approve those minutes or any discussion on those minutes?
I will move to approve.
And I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? So the minutes from the last month's meeting are approved. Mr. Zeitewart, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we could actually hear item 1.2 under the public hearings first, we do have a couple commissioners that need to recuse themselves for items 1.1. So that would allow them to hear that item and then they can actually leave after that point and we can get to item, public hearing 1.1 at that time, so.
Can I understand we have to vote on that?
Yeah, so if we can flip those two items, 1.2 being heard prior to 1.1, if that would be all right.
Should I have someone put that into a motion or?
Uh, yeah, please.
Someone offer to put that into a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we flip the two.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, a motion passes. So I'll go ahead and ask about public comment at this point in time, so does anyone have any discussion about any items that are not on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, so we'll move on and discuss the meeting procedure. So the way this is going to work is I will call the item to be heard and we'll start with the second item tonight. Mr. Zeitewart will present a report and a recommendation. I'll open the hearing to the public. If you wish to testify, wait for me to recognize you, state your name and address, and present your testimony. The order of testimony is the applicant first, then those in favor, then those in opposition, and then there's a rebuttal period that can be made by the applicant. After all testimony has been given, I'll close the public meeting. The commission will then discuss the item. No further public testimony can be taken, except that the chairman may request answers to questions from the commission. If anyone wants to appeal a decision, please let me or Mr. Zeitewart know and we'll talk you through that process and make sure that you've signed in tonight if you do wish to appeal. So that being said, we'll move on to item 1.2, Mr. Zeitewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. What we have in front of you this evening here is a, it's a public hearing to amend Chapter 2, Section 2.4, Policy A8 of the City of Ripon's 2040 General Plan. This is regarding growth accommodation policies for, for the city. At the March 2017 City Council meeting, staff shared a presentation with the City Council regarding custom historical, present, and upcoming residential growth trends for the City of Ripon. From that discussion, staff was directed to bring back some recommendations on an annexation policy for one, and a hard cap for building permits, and a time period on permit issuance. Subsequently, at the, at the April 2017 City Council meeting, staff presented two recommendations to the City Council for considering future growth accommodation policies for the city. The first recommendation was the adoption of an annexation policy and procedure guideline to provide guidance and criteria to be used in evaluating all future annexations for projects in the City of Ripon. Subsequently, the, the City Council adopted an annexation policy at their May meeting via Resolution 17-23 that is attached to your staff report, just for your information. There's policies in there that set forth how we would review properties prior to annexing them into the city, into city limits, including making sure that the growth cap that the council desired to set is being met, which is a 3% cap at this point. The second recommendation was to amend the general plan land use and growth accommodation chapter of the general plan, basically readjusting the growth rate so that the growth rate would not exceed 3% in any given year. At the April meeting, the council did direct staff to start the process for amending the general plan to facilitate these policies. General plan amendments do take a fair amount of time because of required notifications, so we did start that process back in, in April and it is coming in front of you tonight for a recommendation to City Council. Basically, the general plan, as it reads currently, has a growth accommodation policy in there that, that really sets the average annual residential growth rate anywhere between 3 and 6% during the planning period. Now, 3 and 6% is based on residential units, so currently there's about 5,200 residential units within the city. So the city would actually entertain annexing property into the city or, or looking at residential projects as so long as we did not exceed that 3 to 6% cap, which actually is, is quite a range in there. A 3% cap on residential is roughly about 160 permits and a 6% high-end cap is about 320 permits a year. Ripon typically doesn't see that kind of growth, although we have had some spikes in the past that have pushed us up and over those limits. We, we don't typically see that type of growth in any given year. We currently, we're kind of around the neighborhood of anywhere from 40 to 60 permits, residential permits, in a given year. The way development agreements used to be written in the past and the way the growth cap was written was that, you know, a developer could get permits over, say, a three or five-year period of time, because it takes time to get houses built. And sometimes they wouldn't start the houses when they thought they would, so they would end up carrying those permits over and so in one given year, they might build two years' worth of permits if they could sell them that fast and, and push us over that cap, that cap that they had set. In the past, we've had a couple resolutions that did try to set the cap at 3%, and I'd say we did have some years where that got pushed over that cap in any given year. So the council's desires were, were twofold. One was to kind of level out that spiking of, of building. It's hard to keep up with essential city services such as police and public works and such that are needed for residents when you have these huge spikes. So to kind of level that out, it was, the idea was to make sure you don't exceed that 3% in any given year. And then also to set that cap at 3%, so we're not looking at a 3 to 6% range anymore. 3% would be the max we would grow in any given year. So that's, right now, currently with what we have is 160 permits a year. That will go up every year as, as we build more homes, but it does, it goes up, you know, incrementally over, over the years. So there's some proposed language here in the staff report that is, it's actually here in red for you what would be the proposed amendments. It basically steps through the policy that we would follow as we allocate residential permits in the future. Basically, we would look to allocate about 2.5% of permits out in, in a given year through development agreements, leaving about a half a percent as, as a kind of a buffer. So if a developer does miss their opportunity to pull permits because their project might be behind a little bit, there's about a half a percent buffer for them the next year that they could apply for some of those leftover permits, so they're not necessarily stuck and have, having to get at the end of the line maybe to, to get permits, which could be quite a long time if we have projects stacked up. So that, so we would allocate out at 2.5%, keeping that half percent as a buffer, but never exceeding that 3% in any given year. So that's essentially what the, the, the language is, is meant to read in there. It's like I said, it's in, it's in red what would be replaced in the general plan under the growth accommodations chapter in that section. And then Policy A8 would be amended as well. The previous policy talked about annexing enough residential land to maintain a 3 to 6% range for growth in the planning period. You know, that would be now changed to, we would consider annexations to provide enough designated land for, for a projected residential growth rate of 3% per year. So it's more of a hard cap on that and not that bigger range that we had. So those are the two amendments that are being proposed in front, for you this evening to recommend to City Council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Any questions for Mr. Zeitewart?
I have two, please, Ken. The, the reasons for the growth cap, what's the benefit to the city on the growth cap?
On the, the real benefit for that was to kind of more level out the development and, and keep an opportunity for us to be able to add essential services to be able to provide the residents with the services that they have come to expect here in Ripon and stuff. So if you grow too fast, obviously residential doesn't typically pay for development. We, we kind of go on the whole in providing services for residential. Now, commercial obviously comes when residential comes and it's kind of that cat and mouse game here. So you need more residential to attract commercial, but typically residential hits first and then the cost of provide services per house is a hit on our general fund every year. So it's hard, it's hard to add like a police officer or people in public works to provide services to houses. So we wanted to kind of keep that in check and be able to maybe add a little more consistent, over a consistent basis, not having those huge spikes in growth.
Good, thanks, Ken. And then when a builder pulls permits, do they pay the full permit fee for that house?
Yeah, they do.
So let's say, you know, so now they've got this game where they're saying, well, we think we're going to sell 50 homes this year. Let's go and pull 50 permits at 70,000. That comes up to 3.5 million, something like that. And then the economy goes down and they realize we can't build these homes. What would happen? Do those permits expire at the end of the year or what would happen?
They typically don't pull permit until they're ready to start construction on the house. So they're not, they're not pulling 70 permits or, you know, if you're, if you're looking, actually, we're building out by Missland Sports Park right now. So when they're putting a foundation on the ground and ready to put sticks up with the house, that's when they pull the permit. And we don't collect a, a good chunk of our development permit now until the house is final. So they, they don't have to pay the bigger chunk of that permit fee to the city until the house receives a final, which is when we really see our impacts. We don't see a water impact or transportation impact until somebody's living in that home, so they don't pay that until it's done.
Gotcha, okay. So we've never been in a situation where there's been competition for permits significant as, have you ever seen anything like that?
Um, you know, where there has been, back in the past, in, in the early to mid 2000s when we had kind of our big growth spurt, that's when most of Meritage Homes came in. We, we were bumping up against caps where we had to make sure projects, you know, we had to allocate between different projects and there's an allocation schedule that we follow. So, you know, when a developer comes in nowadays, say we had quite a few stacked up, we might look at that allocation schedule and say, you know, we don't have any permits available until 2020. That's just, you know, kind of the way it works. So this gives us the ability to keep that hard cap now and be able to, to let them know that coming in the door. Or, you know, right now, like I said, we don't have a huge issue with the 3% cap, but we do have a couple projects in the pipeline right now that could push us close to that limit.
I understand. No, and I appreciate it. I've, I've lived here for many years and I've never heard one person say, I just wish Ripon would grow more quickly.
Ken, in regard to North Point specific plan, we've, you know, we've set, set forth what, what we want in that area. Does this, I mean, you could have some people that were looking at developing based on the previous 3 to 6%, and now we're saying 3%, are we going to, is this going to impact some folks that want it to develop in that area?
Potentially, I guess you could. I mean, we've had, I said, typically, we don't see 3% every year. We haven't in quite some time, probably since the recession hit. But in the early 2000s, we did have, you know, quite a few projects looking. There's a lot of dynamics in, in development, obviously, land prices, development standards, development fees. So, you know, the North Point specific plan's probably, I, I'm estimating more of a 20 to 30-year plan. Kind of like the life of the general plan, so it could have some impact. Obviously, putting a cap on anything like that could affect, you know, plans for, for developers and future growth. But I think it's something that, from a policy standpoint, that, that council felt was very important to be able to continue to maintain high levels of service in this community versus getting behind, maybe not be able to keep up with law enforcement, becoming more of an unsafe community because of what's surrounding us. And once you lose that, it, it's very hard to get back if you ever can get it back.
Right. No, I, I agree. I just, you know, concerned for people who are trying to make plans and invest in our community and whatnot. You used the term never when you said exceeding that 3%, and so this would be a hard and fast number then?
Yeah, the only caveat in there is the council, at their discretion, can exempt like a high-density project out of that growth cap if they felt there was a good reason for that. But that's a council, would be a City Council decision to exempt them from that.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple. You, you've mentioned several times that the City Council directed you to, to look at this, so I'm assuming that this came from the City Council saying we want to, we want some caps. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes, correct.
Okay. Now, this does include all residential units, so like the apartments are included in that as well, is that correct?
The apartments being built right now?
Yes.
You know, so the apartments and the project going on across from Missland right now, it's, it's called The Vineyards. It's 133 homes. They actually secured development agreements prior to the 3% cap. So when we look at development agreements now, we've, I've been trying to take a best guess of how those two projects would build out and trying to allocate permits to these new projects to still try to keep us under that 3% cap. It's kind of a hazy crystal ball at this point, since we, those other projects actually can pull permits almost, kind of almost as fast as they want. They, they are based on some performance. They do have to finish, you know, certain phases of their project before they can move on to the second phase and stuff. So we, we issued like, for instance, The Vineyards project, 133 homes. I think there's three phases of permits in that project. They have to finish half of their Phase 1, have to be final homes before we'll let them move on to Phase 2, because we don't want a project, you know, 133 homes and half, halfway being built and, and a developer going belly up and, and leaving everything totally unfinished out there. So both projects do have some performance standards that might slow them down a little bit and, and spread those out, but they're, they're not based on, they're, like I said, they're solely based on performance standards. So they're not based on, where we do the hard cap is like, we'll, we'll only allocate out certain permits on a yearly basis type of thing to make sure we standard that 3%.
Okay, so, so in, and I, having done, having been on the commission before and on it again, I, I get that there's periods of time where it takes to get to the point of development. So, because my, my other concern would be is if, if a project gets partway finished and then they can't pull enough permits to finish it. Now you have a, a partially finished project and I think we'd be better off going a little over that 3% than having half-built homes, I mean, or partially-built homes.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you agree?
No, no, there's, there's some concern with that. I think, you know, what this does is it puts the ball back in the developer's court too to really look at, you know, obviously, when you sit down to, to talk to a developer about, with a development agreement and try to negotiate out when they want permits, they want them all day one and they don't want any restrictions on how fast they can pull them, because, you know, if they can build 100 homes this year or two homes this year, they just don't want that restriction. It's going to actually put a little pressure on them to kind of really sit down and, and analyze how many they think they can sell in a given year and, and, you know, it's a negotiation process. So, you know, come to us and say, okay, well, you know, you, you only told us we can have 20 this year. We think we can, we think we can build 30 or 40 this year and sell them, so can we get a few more? And if we can make sure, if they still fit in that schedule and under the 3%, we could, we could work with them on that.
So, and then you said the City Council has a discretion if it's a high-density project to increase that, but other projects not so?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
James, anything for you?
No, I like it. It said I've taken some ride-alongs with the Ripon Police Department and once you lose a city, you can't get it back. So I like it.
So Ken, since this is sort of your motion, do I open it up to the public for discussion?
Uh, yeah, if there's anybody that wants to speak on it, this is a public hearing, so open it up and see if there's anybody who has anything.
Anybody in the audience like to step up and address this at all? So no takers? So any discussion amongst the commission regarding this project or this change? No discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I will move that we recommend the City Council approve the general plan amendment, GP 17-01, Regarding Text Amendments Relating to Growth Accommodations and Residential Building Permits, based on the findings of the staff.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, passes. We'll move on to the second item, I understand two of you have to head on out?
I'm a neighbor of Ripon Christian, I live right across the street, so it'd be unfair for me to be here and vote on your project as much as I like y'all.
And from a construction standpoint, I could potentially have a financial interest in the project, so.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yeah.
So Mr. Zeitewart, whenever you're ready, you can discuss the next item.
All right, we do have, there's actually several applications with this one project, so I'll kind of step you through here. We actually have a request this evening to demolish an existing residential house located on about 1.3 acres in town here to construct a, almost an 8,200 square foot preschool complex. Along with that, we are looking to amend the general plan land use of the property and rezone the property to an appropriate use for school. And so the property is located at 839 West Main Street. Good here. So like I said, the application is to demolish an existing house that's located at this location here. It's on Main Street, almost at the end of Vera Avenue. There's a house that sits there on about 1.3 acres. There used to be a walnut orchard in the back, but that has since been removed. It does abut up against Ripon Christian Schools on the northern boundary. There's four residences along, on Maple Avenue on the eastern boundary and there is a residence on the western boundary that is zoned commercial. So there's a house there, but it, that parcel is zoned commercial. So there's that slide there and then obviously here's a picture of the house that's currently sitting on the property. So again, part of the application, which is the public hearing portion of the application this evening, is to do a general plan land use change for the property. It's currently zoned urban core, as you can see in the left picture there. Urban core is basically is a land use that covers a wide variety of allowable zoning in, in the City of Ripon. It includes residential, professional office, commercial, and light and heavy industrial uses. However, schools don't fall into that category. Urban core zoning is really zoning for, within City Ripon. That was currently developed or existingly, existing developed property when the city was incorporated in 1945. So you'll see that in a lot of the downtown area and some of the older areas on the other side that they are urban core land uses in our general plan land use map. Along with this general plan land use amendment, the applicant is also, would also be requesting to rezone the property. So the current land use would be urban core, the, the proposed land use they would do would be SE, dash ES, so that's school, elementary school designation. And then the zoning that would go with it, it's currently zoned R1, which is for single-family residential. We would be rezoning it to PS, public, semi-public is the designation. That's what all the schools in, in Ripon here are zoned is PS. So this is just falling in line with the, the current zoning for school sites. Got a technical error here. Let me get back on track. Maybe. Very. The proposed location of the preschool building, as you can see on the, on site plan, is mostly in the middle of the parcel and it slid a little closer to the westerly property line. The proposed building does meet all required setbacks for the zone in which is, it is proposed to be located and for the type of use that the building will entail. The front setback for the property from Main Street is about 99 feet back from the, from the right-of-way. The side setback for the buildings are approximately 87 and a half feet from the eastern property line, so those are the residences that back up to the property on Maple Avenue. And about 16 feet from the western property line. And then the rear of the building setback is about 103 feet from the northern property line, which is Ripon Christian Schools, their elementary school site. As you can see on the site plan, there is a couple storage buildings being proposed for the back of the site. They're 12 by 24 storage buildings and they are about 10 feet off the back property line. So for the, for the zone that it, it is in, the, it does meet all the required setbacks. Required setbacks for such buildings, like a commercial building in that area, would be 30 feet from the front property line, 10 feet from the rear and 10 feet from any side property line. So it does meet all, all setbacks for that. The off-street parking facility, which is shown on the plan here, provides a total of 60 parking spaces, 57 standard, and three handicap accessible van accessible sites, which meets the required spaces by local regulations. And all the stalls on here do meet the City of Ripon standard parking dimensions, which are 10 by 19. Those are a little wider than most communities, but I think everybody with large vehicles in this town enjoys having a little breathing room when they get out of their cars. The site plan does not indicate any bicycle parking, but that will be a requirement of the development subject to local regulations, so they will have to put a bike rack somewhere on site. Just to give you an idea, so they are proposing 60 spaces. If they were looking at strictly at our standards, City Ripon standards for an elementary or junior high, they only call for two parking spaces per classroom. There's five to six classrooms here, they would only be required to have 12, which obviously we think is a lot less than what would be required. A lot of times we do go by standards in the parking generation manual. This is a manual that is put together by transportation engineers. And even looking at the parking requirements in there for an elementary school or, or daycare-type facility, their, their site is well above of what would be required of that. They, they would only require somewhere 20 to 25 spaces. So they are proposing 60 spaces, so I think, we do think the site is adequately parked. Access to the site, to the preschool site will be provided by one commercial driveway approach off of Main Street. The proposed location of the, of the commercial driveway is about 24 feet away from the eastern property line, which places the, places the driveway approximately halfway between Maple Avenue and Vera Avenue. So on Main Street there, if you can get an idea of that. Due to some traffic concerns, especially in the morning and afternoon hours when, when both schools are going to school or letting out, a traffic analysis has been made a condition of approval for the project. The analysis would, we would like to see identify appropriate locations of necessary improvements to the driveway entrance to help mitigate any of the concerns that might arise from the, from the analysis. The applicant did actually show kind of a, an island in the entrance there. We're not sure if that's going to be required or not, but the thoughts would be is, is we're thinking the analysis might show that it'd be fine to pull into the site to drop kids off, but coming out of the site, it might be restricted to a right-turn-only movement out of the site. At certain hours of the day, it might be a little tough to pull out of the site and, and turn left on the Main Street or head east on, on Main Street, given the amount of traffic coming down Main Street at certain hours. So that's what we hope the traffic analysis will flush out and they would recommend a design for that driveway, an ultimate design for that driveway to help mitigate any traffic concerns. The exterior of the buildings appear to be a mixture of stucco with some stone veneer wainscoting and with aluminum kind of storefront glass doors and windows. The building will be accented with differing materials and colors, as well as an accent band of stucco at the fascia and the columns. The roof will be a hip and gable-style roof covered with a 40-year asphalt composition shingle roofing. The applicant has also indicated a covered play area. There's the other side elevation of the building too. So the applicant has indicated a covered play area for the playground area, as well as, as a larger outdoor playground area. And then the storage buildings in the back, the 12 by 24 storage buildings, there is a condition that they would have to meet and match the architectural style of the building. So if the building's stuccoed, we would expect those to be a stuccoed building as well, not like a tough shed or a cargo container, anything like that. Also indicated on the site plan is a trash enclosure. It's actually located at the front edge of the driveway here on the site. It's actually located at the front edge of the driveway here on the site, the parking facility. The trash enclosure will be required to be covered pursuant to city of Ripon standards and the design and construction of the enclosure. An associated roof system shall be architecturally compatible with the main building on site. There's no, although there's no lighting plans have been indicated on the plans, there will be a lighting provided, which will have to meet city of Ripon standards. Once submitted, the lighting plans will be reviewed in more detail by the Ripon Police Department and Planning Department to ensure that adequate lighting for security around the building and the site is maintained, and also to ensure that all lighting is appropriately shielded from any adjacent neighboring properties. The city standards call for maintaining lights and not having glare on neighboring properties, so it's important for us to review. The site does contain about 16,500 square feet or so of landscaping, which is 29%. This greatly exceeds our city standard of 10% for this zone. At this time, they have not indicated any detail as to the plant species or irrigation, however, they will be required to submit detailed landscaping plans and irrigation plans to the Public Works Director and the Planning Department for final approval, and also showing that they comply with, with the State of California model water-efficient landscape ordinance. The applicant does intend to fence a majority of the site. The plans depict a seven-foot aluminum fence along the western and northern boundaries of the project, so along, the western boundary would be to the property that's zoned next to it that's residential, but it's zoned commercial, and then the northern boundary is, is where it butts, the Christian School currently. And as a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to install a black-coated chain-link fence with some privacy slats along that boundary, the western boundary, for that neighboring property, residential neighboring property there. Along the eastern boundary, the Ripon Municipal Code requires an eight-foot masonry wall to be constructed, separating residential, non-residential properties. As a condition of approval for the project, the applicant will be required to install a wall or an approved equal along the four residences along Maple Avenue there. The idea would be for the school and the city and the residences to meet. There are some concerns from the residences there that maybe they don't want an eight-foot masonry wall, something a little different. So, it's something that we would like to sit down with the parties involved and meet with them to make sure that it's an approved equivalent, and it's something that they're all, they can all be happy with. We did sit down with the applicant and Project Review Committee on September 7th to review the project and go over conditions of the project, which are in the staff report in front of you this evening, so all conditions for the project are in here, as much of what I went, already went over here with, with the commission this evening. So, there is a recommended action in there. We would be looking for the Planning Commission to approve the preschool, the Ripon Christian Preschool Site application tonight, and that would be contingent upon the city council approving the land use, general plan land use amendment and the rezone of the property. So, you would be recommending to the city council on those two items, and I think that's about it for my presentation. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ken. So, would the applicant like to take the stand and state your name and address and give us some thoughts on the project?
I'm Jim Shaw, the architect for the applicant, Ripon Christian School, and this is an expansion for the school to get preschool activities close to, on a site as possible as they can. It's kind of a good infill project for that urban core area downtown. A lot of the schools that are existing on Main Street are right on Main Street, and we're trying to stay back as far as we can from Main Street and maintain a lot of the residential aspects of the neighborhood that are there, and try to fit in architecturally with that, as well as be conscious of the commercial that's going on and the, kind of the improvements that are happening on Main Street as well.
So, I have a question for you. So, I was thinking about this this weekend, and initially I thought that dropping somebody off, there wasn't enough space to actually drop a kid off, and I realized this is preschool, so probably parents park, take your kid out.
And walk your children, correct.
Yeah, so.
Sign them in.
Yeah, so I think I'm okay with that, that issue. And the building sure looks nice, very attractive.
Thank you.
And the photos. Any questions, you guys?
I have a question. I don't know if you're gonna be able to answer, or Ken, or how this will go, but the masonry wall, the neighbors are kind of saying maybe they don't want to be blocked in with this masonry wall. So, let's say the city and the neighbors and the school comes to an agreement that they want something different, maybe some partial masonry and then wrought iron or whatever, 'cause they like to look out. Let's say the neighbors move. Who's gonna, and the next, the new neighbor wants a masonry wall. Is that, is that something that we're gonna have to come back and, and the school's gonna have to pay for, or the neighbors, or have we thought about that, or?
No, I mean, actually, it's something that if you guys approve, approve it with the site plan, then that's what would be the standard for that. It'd be a variance from our code at that point is what you're really looking at. I mean, you're, you're looking at approving some sort of a variance from our standard.
So, so, we would, we would approve it with the requirement of an eight-foot masonry wall? And if the neighbors say, "I don't want that," then, does it come back to us, or?
The idea would be to have the school and the staff here and the neighbors sit down together and then be able to approve a wall there that is an equivalent, approved equivalent. And if they can't come to some agreeance on the thing, we come back before the Planning Commission for you guys to give the final say on what would actually go there.
Okay.
How did the masonry wall idea come up in the first place? Is that sort of typical?
Our municipal code, anywhere you have residential and non-residential butting each other in the zoning district is when that property develops, the non-residential property develops, it's a requirement that they do an eight-foot masonry wall between the properties.
Okay.
Just like on Miljo, right? With that, with the hill?
Yeah, so if you go down the Fulton Overpass there on Arkway and hit Miljo, there's, there's homes backing up against, there's that open field that's commercial, it's eight-foot masonry wall along there.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, are there any other folks in the audience that are in favor of the project that'd like to speak? So, no takers there. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to the project? Nothing there, and so I think that's pretty much it. Any discussion amongst us, or questions for Ken?
Yeah, we currently got cameras on the high school parking lot, football field, gym, and performing arts center.
Are those gonna be visible for the new preschool facility as well? Do you guys know?
No, I don't, I don't think the, obviously, the ones that are down there would not be visible for down here. This is something that, obviously, we submitted to all the departments and the police department didn't request one for this location.
Yeah, I was just curious.
I don't know if they have another one in the vicinity that covers it or not.
Those darn four and five-year-olds.
I'm worried about the creepers down by.
Yeah, I don't care about that, yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
I would like to request that the condition be amended about the fence, though that would include that the residents and the school and the staff here get together on the fence, and if there's no agreeance on what should be there between the three groups involved, it would come back before the Planning Commission for your final say on it.
Ken, have you heard from those four neighbors on that one side at all, or?
There's one here now. And no, I haven't heard from, there's four there. I've heard from two, not the other two.
Okay. That's, that's good that you're here, so that, keep the communication channels open.
So, so as it, as it stands now, we would move to, potentially move to approve it with a requirement for the masonry fence, but an amendment if the neighbors want something different. Is that basically what you're saying?
Yeah, so, the condition here is proponent agrees to construct an eight-foot split-faced masonry wall with a cap along the eastern property boundary, or an approved equal by the city of Ripon Planning Director. I would maybe amend that condition to require that the three entities get together, the residences, the school, and the city, and work on a, on an approved wall for their, an approved separation there. If there's no agreeance, if they can't, if there's no agreeance between that, those three groups, then it would come back for, to the Planning Commission for your final approval on that. You guys would be the final say on it at that point. Mitzi will figure out how to write all that in the condition.
Just gonna say.
She's scribbling furiously over there.
This is a long motion.
She'll be in my office tomorrow, ask me about.
All right, any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I don't think we have to read it all. We could just say, "as is," Mitzi.
You could say, you can actually just do the motion as in the staff report with that added condition, and she can, she'll know what you mean.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Ripon Christian preschool major site, along with the annex of the construction wall.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sounds easy.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, so that concludes that. So, we're gonna move on now to any commissioner reports? Any discussion about other stuff, guys? Anything else from you, Ken? What we're looking forward to, or?
Yeah, we do have a couple of projects scheduled already for next month. There's two residential projects in the North Point area that'll be coming before the Planning Commission. Both of them are a medium-density project. They meet, comply with the North Point, you know, requirements for, for size of lots and everything, so you'll be seeing those in this next month. Two different builders or two different developers proposing two different projects. So, those are pretty important projects that are, that are in the pipeline and coming down, so we're looking forward to next month and having you guys hear those two projects.
And by the way, I wanted to mention, I saw Deborah a couple of weeks ago at the Balloon Festival. It is scary crossing River Road, getting from one side of town to that Missland Park, so I just want to alert you to, at some point in time, we need some way to cross that road safely.
Well, that's, that's what the controls are going in there.
Yeah, so with The Vineyards project, they're doing 133 homes. They're widening River Road there, and the city's got a project where we are widening River Road across from Parkview School, so there'll be a median there, and there'll actually be a signal at that intersection, so people can hit the crosswalk button and get across there safely.
That sounds good. All right, I think that concludes it. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.